You guys ready? Good evening. I call to order the April 25th, 2016, regular meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone tonight in the audience and we please, um, we want to ask everyone to please silence your cellphones and various electronics. And so let's please stand for the pledge.
(Inaudible)
Mrs. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Minera?
He.
Mr. Nelms?
Yeah.
President Copeland-Dansby?
Present. I need a motion to, um, actually amend the agenda. Ms. Bates, do you have a motion?
Yes, um, I move that we, um, remove Resolution Number Two.
Do we do a roll call?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Minera?
Aye.
Mr. Nelms?
Aye.
President Copeland-Dansby?
Aye. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting April 11th, 2016, the regular board meeting April 11th, 2016, and the special meeting April 20th, 2016. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved as presented. Mrs. Bolton, as Chair of the Student Achievement Committee, please present the April 11th, 2016 Committee Meeting Report.
Thank you. Um, the Student Achievement Committee, as some of you know, and we announced, I think, the last board meeting, is going to be having a separate and additional meeting specifically for the Code of Conduct text and so that they can be prepared for our, um, passage before the end of the school year. And so the short, rather short minutes that you have before you from the Student Achievement Committee from that meeting with that one particular topic, and I think we discussed some of the things that we wanted to see. Part of it is more family-friendly, a more positive approach to our, our families rather than necessarily kind of the Code of Conduct only. It has a lot of effort put into it regarding support and ways for families to connect with the schools if they have issues and concerns. And again, today we met in Student Achievement and saw the next draft of it and we're, we're very encouraged by it and we think that the board will be very pleased with the direction that we're going.
Excellent. Thank you. Mrs. Hoffman, as Chair of the Policy Committee, please present the April 18th, 2016 Committee Meeting Report.
Sure. The first thing we discussed was how Mr. Hoying's team's going to be working to update the FMLA, opium abuse, and diabetes policies, so those will be coming back to us in June. And then we dove into two really big policies that we're, we're working on right now. Um, the first one was discussing the draft of the preschool enrollment policy using the input from the full board's last committee of the whole meeting. As you can see in this report, there are some new questions that arose from that conversation, so we'll be bringing those back to the full board for input at a later date. Um, and then we discussed the latest draft of the magnet enrollment policy, which is going to come back to the full board for final input at next Wednesday's COW, so for community members who are interested, COW means Committee of the Whole. I'm sorry, we always use that abbreviation. Um, Committee of the Whole, that's, um, on, uh, May 4th at 11:30. Uh, and so for the board to know, as we did last time, we'll send an updated, uh, draft of that policy as well as some data, uh, and if we can all make sure we reviewed that prior to the next Committee of the Whole meeting, so that hopefully this will be our last conversation and we can stick on our timeline to having that magnet policy finalized before the end of the school year. So I submit as written.
Thank you. Mrs. Bolton, back to you.
Finance.
As Chair of Finance Committee, meeting, Finance Committee, please present the April 19th, 2016 Committee Meeting Report.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, this was a, a, kind of a chock-full meeting, uh, but some major highlights besides the routine, uh, presentation regarding revenue and expenditures that our treasurer so aptly presents to us with helping us figure out what some of the anomalies might be. Uh, the biggest issue that we dealt with was, uh, dating back to a January assignment, uh, that, uh, Member Bates had put forward in that we wanted to review, uh, what we call our supplier diversity, uh, efforts regarding minority, women, and local vendors. And it, fortunately for the administration, they really delivered very well on this report and they got the senior executive corps to help provide the information and research. And attached to your minutes, you'll see the CPS disparity analysis contracts awarded, which shows us in pretty good stead, if you will, when comparing us with minority contracts, women contracts, and local vendors, uh, in comparison with the city. You'll recall that the city produced a several hundred-page report regarding their supplier diversity and minority vendor, uh, contracts awarded. And as you read through this, you'll see that, uh, we are higher in virtually every category and are proud of that. And also, we will be adding it to our work plan that we hope to have adopted tonight, uh, that we will have quarterly, uh, review of our supplier diversity or minority vending, uh, contracts. We also asked, uh, just as a way to look into the school piece and the equity piece, we, uh, went to, uh, the administration supplied us with a number of art and music PE teachers in the district, school by school, and that was also very illuminating. And I know that as we learn more from Ernst &amp; Young and the Parthenon, uh, reports and audit, uh, we will find out too about the, uh, CRA, CRA costs over time and how much some of the arrangements that we make in order to facilitate economic development is actually, at least on an annual basis, costing the district money, uh, but of course helps develop economic, uh, stability as well. So those were the things I would bring to your attention. Um, the final, uh, issue is, uh, as you can see, we, um, are also in the midst of the E-rate, uh, contracted monies. And as we already know, we are going to be hearing from the Parthenon folks regarding the audit that's been supplied by, really paid for by members of the community so that we can make the right decisions regarding our levy.
Excellent. Thank you. Do board members have any questions about the April 20th, 2016 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes? No? I do want to point out a couple, um, thing or actually just one particular topic. Um, our Deputy Superintendent Laura Mitchell gave us an update on, um, Vision 2020, and we may have, um, heard some, um, media coverage related to it, but, um, specifically a multi-year summary of the plan focused on enhancing, um, arts and culture, dual language, environmental science, gender-based, gifted, high-technology innovation programs, Montessori, student enterprise, and virtual retool. And so again, um, I want to call your attention to those minutes to, um, keep us focused on where we're moving with, um, some of our neighborhood schools. We need a voice vote to accept the committee reports as written. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, thank you. Tonight's presentation will be "All Kids Thrive," and I'll turn over to our superintendent for introductions.
Thank you. We have some great guests, um, who have been partnering with the district. And at this time, I would like to introduce Dr. Tom DeWitt, Associate Chair for Education, Dr. Uma Kotagal, Executive Leader, Population and Community Health, and Dr. Rob Kahn, also of Children's Hospital, who is going to get us started. So thank you so much for being such great partners. You're right down the street and you're always looking out for the children in Cincinnati Public Schools.
But thank you very much, Dr. Ronan, and absolutely we are here seeking deeper and more meaningful partnerships than, than we have had in the past. And I just want to start by showing you, uh, the Cincinnati Children's New Strategic Plan going forward for 2020. And for the first time ever, uh, a central focus, one of our pillars, is on community, right? So to help Cincinnati's kids be the healthiest in the nation through strong community partnerships. And why is it up there? Uh, increasingly, um, a deep appreciation for the inequities in child health here, yeah, in the county. What you have here is every bed day for a child in Hamilton County, uh, for three years from 2012 to 2014, and you don't have to love data to look up there and say tremendous inequalities in the number of days children spend in the hospital, uh, based on the neighborhood that a child lives in, right? You may have heard, uh, ZIP code matters as much if not more than genetic code. And the question for our hospital is, how do we, uh, make a better difference in the health of children in our own community? And I'll just call out that the same neighborhoods that are high in asthma are high in prematurity, they're high in inpatient bed days for mental health, uh, and those are the neighborhoods you see off to the left. Um, and we just, uh, call out two here, Avondale and East Price Hill, because we know the very hard work we have to do to change, uh, how healthcare relates, uh, to the root causes of poor health, whether that's poverty, toxic housing, food insecurity. And to me, with the increasing realization that the same kids we worry about are the kids you're worrying about, and, and how could we possibly not do it better if we're working closely together? So the goals, the specific measures we're looking at are the 66,000 kids in Cincinnati. The key words are in red. Uh, our job is to help, it's not necessarily to lead, but how do we help through these kinds of strategic partnerships with great community assets, institutions, and agencies? Specifically, the goals are, uh, reduce annual infant deaths in Hamilton County by 33%. That's the work of Cradle Cincinnati and many others. Reduce that bed day disparity by 15% with a focus on the two neighborhoods. But increasingly, it's more than just kids not being sick and not dying, it's how can we contribute to kids thriving? And so the next two goals, I think, are most directly relevant, uh, to your considerations, uh, is to develop a measure and ensure five-year-olds have a healthy mind and body, very much like kindergarten readiness, but what is it that the healthcare system and primary care pediatrics can do to deliver on that? Vaccines, concern about the BMI or obesity, dental, behavior, hearing and vision, and emergent literacy. Now pediatricians have always cared about these issues, but we haven't delivered on the outcomes. So you have children arriving at age three into the preschool or at age five into kindergarten, not ready. These are kids who have walked through our doors many times. We might have given a phone number for the dental clinic or a phone number for vision or a phone number for speech, but we haven't delivered on outcomes. And the last is really, again, why we're here tonight. How can we support you in ensuring that by third grade, every child is reading proficiently? How can we, through partnerships with Dr. Ronan and others, uh, contribute to success there? Uh, here's how we're thinking about it, with families and children always at the center. Uh, work groups thinking about third-grade reading, uh, deep influences in the neighborhood, infant mortality, and re-envisioning primary care to connect it better to the community. What is it we've done reasonably well at Children's Hospital and we want to offer our help, uh, to anyone who is interested in the community in partnership to achieve these goals? Developing a learning system, data and technology. How do we take what we've learned about improvement, uh, work and quality improvement and share it, uh, with agencies and others and schools in the community? Ethnography and then research and evaluation for generalizable knowledge. Um, the most important thing for us is that how do we invite everyone's best ideas and learn as quickly as possible, as smartly as possible, um, and do it together? Um, and to do that, I just have this image of, of a network, right? Everybody has something to offer and our goal is to set up a learning system or a learning network in which every great principal, every great teacher, every great preschool, uh, is connected to the doc, the school nurse, uh, that has otherwise they've had difficulty connecting with. Um, I'm going to turn this over for Tom, just for, uh, a last slide or two in laying this out a little more clearly in the third-grade reading space.
Yeah. Our concept here is that to really address the issue of reading in third grade, you have to start, what we talk about, from minus nine, at conception almost, through nine years of age. And the idea is through a network and a continuum of how do you continue to assess children through that whole spectrum? For example, at birth, if you ask the parents, "Do you have difficulty reading?" If they answer yes, 50% of those kids are going to have difficulty later on. The challenge in our system right now is we identify that, but how do we then get those kids into the necessary and appropriate support to help their reading? And it isn't just done at, at the medical center or even in the larger communities, but often neighborhood by neighborhood, which is what Rob and the, particularly in Avondale and East Price Hill, we're learning how to do that. So is there a lead person in the neighborhood who, who likes to read and will read to all the kids in the neighborhood? Is there a grandmother or another lead, uh, mother or parent? Father could be as well doing that. So this is the concept, is working in conjunction from minus nine to nine to identify kids early, identify the systems that are available to help those kids and get them connected. Um, and, and we're looking forward in terms of preschool, same thing, a place to identify and intervene, and in kindergarten as well with it. And this thrive by five that Rob talked about, a healthy, thriving child at five, you know, does a much better job learning than a child who has challenges that Rob's identified with that. Um, and actually, in some ways, as you're seeing here, certainly the primary care is part of that, infant mortality in terms of newborn and neighbor influences are all parts that go together with it. So this is an integrated, very much community-focused, uh, activity. And as you can see in third-grade reading, we're increasingly getting the key people across the community who are involved in literacy and reading as, as part of that process. And we've started some wonderful programs with CPS already in terms of thinking about a lot of these issues. Um, and just, this is just a quick slide to show the same concept of how do you go from birth, prenatal to third grade of screening and assessment? And this is the concept, is to integrate this all together, but it's part of the larger picture of community health.
So we'd be happy to entertain any questions. That was a lot in a short amount of time. I mean, the bottom line again is, we have the same goals for kids. Pediatricians have not been at the table reliably, their offices haven't made it easy, um, and we would love to figure out how to work closely together with you, uh, to achieve outcomes, uh, starting from, uh, pregnancy on.
Sure. Board members, do you have any questions about the presentation? Mr. Nelms?
First of all, thank you for your presentation. I've been employed with Children's Hospital for the last 11 years. I work in, uh, through a point of information, more specifically, education and outreach, where we're always in the community, providing the needed services. I got two questions. One is, I do know that when you learn to read, you learn to lead, you learn to lead yourself primarily, but you can also develop the cognitive and critical thinking skills that allows you to sometime transcend, transcend your, uh, environment. I wanted to ask you, uh, here, it says, uh, my question would be, how do you offset the fundamental need to read when we're living in a highly technological age, a computerized age? That's my first question. My second would be, could you elaborate and name some of the social influences that you've identified?
Sure. So I'll start with the second one and then have Tom speak, um, about your first question. So it's social influence, it is the exact same ones that your, your schools face as the kids come in we face, right? So we have a, a program where we partner with Legal Aid, uh, in our primary care clinic. We now refer over 800 kids and families per year to Legal Aid, and it is unstable housing, unfairly denied benefits, domestic violence, and so on. And so I think for us, it's through these partnerships, Legal Aid, the Free Store Food Bank and others, and then spreading those widely.
To your question about reading and technology, I think the appreciation now is, it's important when children are really young, in the first and second year of life, that's when books and reading and parent-child interaction is really critical. When they get to three and they teach us all how to use that technology, they can move on to that. But I think the key here is really early on, um, it's, it's reading, something called dialogic reading is important, but also it's the parent-child interaction sort of accentuates that. And as I say, later on, technology will help and whether they're eBooks or that type of thing, but that's part of the message early on is, is, and, you know, there's a program in pediatrics called Reach Out and Read, where all the pediatricians actually in Cincinnati talk to the new mothers about the important thing. They give them books and talk the importance of their reading. So it's a continuum. I don't think it's an either/or, it's an and in a continuum. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Minera?
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. I used to be employed by Children's and, uh, I just love the leadership structure and so thank you. Uh, the engagement in the community and with the families, I know it's highly valued and the same is for us, so I definitely believe that there's plenty of opportunities to work together. The more I continue to work in the community, the more I continue to, um, represent the district and represent the community here in the district, um, I still feel that there is not a full grasp and understanding of what a community learning center is. And I'm wondering, have you been presented with what a community learning center is from the district?
Oh, um, I would say not in the depth we need to, right? So we have, I've been down to Euler School a couple times and seen the incredible possibilities there and, and in the same way, we're trying to think, how do we do that kind of integrative structure? But we'd appreciate, love an offline conversation, uh, to learn more about how you do those one-stop shops, how you engage the families and the parents, uh, in learning with, with the kids.
Right. And, and that's exactly where I, I was going to. It's, um, it, it's not just partnering or just having a one-touch opportunity with the school. It could be. But, so I would love for the administration to maybe connect offline and then, uh, kind of really show you, Euler is one of our staples, yes, but not all schools are Euler.
Right.
And so I really value what you're doing. I really value the presentation because I believe that our connecting point is our community learning center. And our schools, all of our schools are going to have a community learning center. Those who do not have a community learning center will have one, and we definitely don't believe, as, as far as the policy is concerned, that they all have to look the same. And so to some, your engagement might be very limited, to some it might be a lot. So, um, I just want to make sure that administration can connect with that and maybe provide with them, uh, a presentation of what it could look like, um, what the responsibilities from both the partners could be.
Certainly. Well, in fact, Children's Hospital is the health provider in three of our community learning centers, so thank you very much for that.
No, we'd welcome that. Thank you for the idea.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, so, I'm trying to, I was pausing because I don't know that this is actually a formulated question, but as I was hearing you, um, talk about leveraging other community members, I find this idea really interesting, um, because it is important to educate parents on, for example, the importance of reading to your children. But I also think we, there are so many, um, pressures on so many of our families' time. So I'm even thinking, like, my own house, I have two small children, and by the time they get home from school and we finish homework and we, and they go to this practice and that practice, and with it, and I have to sign a form every night that says I've read to my kids for 20 minutes. And I know what's best for kids and I know it is best, and I have every resource available to me. I am, I have a partner in my house as well, um, and I only have two children, and, um, you know, and so I have all of these privileges that a lot of our family, our families don't have, and it's still so hard sometimes to get that 20 minutes in a night. And so I think it's so, super important though, educating parents to know it's important to read, but there's also something about figuring out, how do we build the support structures so that if I am a single parent who's also working two jobs, I, I know it's important to read to my kid, but I honestly just do not have the time. And so this idea of like, is there a grandparent in the neighborhood who reads to all of the kids? Or is it the library that we're partnering with or what? It, it's just an interesting one because it's beyond just educating parents.
So I think, um, I spend most of my time trying to improve systems and the attention to how regularly a process happens is really important. And what we learn in this space is there is this aspiration and then there is every day, what do I get done? And how do I help people do that? So it's going to involve community activation, it's going to involve more than one person having the burden of having to read, it's going to involve libraries thinking differently, and I think your comment about the community learning centers are important. We find even in our early work that while people are very interested in it, a child might have, for example, a class in the morning around reading to cover the reading gap, but they come late to school. So while I have this theory that I got to read to them, they're not in class in the first 30 or 45 minutes when it is the time to read. So it's getting deep to figure out if this is my outcome, what are my process reliability and how do I kind of solve it? And I think the gaps are many. We found the gaps in healthcare are many and we think the gaps in, you know, in the space of education and families and communities are many. So we'd have to get down into those details to figure it out. What can, what could we do? Could, could libraries, you know, bring, bring those kinds of circulating things around? Could people read to people without having, it having to be you at 8:30 at night, you know, trying to figure out, how am I going to get this one more task done so I could, like, check it off on my box? And it, it will take a community and especially for underserved children, it will take a large part of the community to do that. We've been working with a lot of mothers and fathers in neighborhoods to try to understand what their pressures are.
Great.
And what they may bring to bear, and we're impressed with their resilience and their ability to do it if we can support them, if we could bring a little bit to the table. So it's a great question.
That's great. Thank you.
Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, uh, thank you so much for the presentation and the service, and I think we're all very fortunate to have so wonderful partners, if you will, in so many ways, and to be, through the leadership of the superintendent, have been really focusing on children's health. But, uh, two things particularly, I like that we're interconnecting reading and health, and I like the fact that we are, you know, it's not a siloed thing, we're going to now do the health thing and now we're going to do the education thing. If it's bringing that interface together, I think is fabulous. The other piece is, what we have problems with, as I understand it, is that while we offer, we have the school-based health centers, we have a number of health partners, we've got the vision piece, we've got the asthma, you know, statistics that we're working on and what have you. One of the things is building trust with our families so that they'll sign the consent forms so that indeed we can deliver the medical, uh, and, uh, counseling things that we need to. So to start this early to build trust, uh, I think is going to really be a great long-term, uh, improvement for us if it can get started early and it's not siloed, it's everybody working together, but the consent forms are critical. I couldn't agree with you more, I think, Rob, and I have been working in the early infant mortality space about pregnant women and getting them to health early, and trust is probably the single most important thing that we need. And trust is shown by showing up every day, and you all do it all of the time, but trust is lost very easily, and it's especially lost in multi-sector work where you're handing off from one sector to another sector. And in a lot of cases, our children in that space where, you know, all of that is happening. So that is at the core of what we need to be thinking about. So you are so right, and I know you will make us work better. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for your, thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. I just, I do just have one comment though. Um, as I sit here and notice your strategic plan, it has a, a global focus on community, and I appreciate that from your employees giving to making, making a difference, um, providing safe and, and exceptional care to every child and every family every day. These are the children that we serve in our school district, you all know that. And I really do appreciate the, um, the words you used, the integrated, uh, community-focused approach. And so for me, understanding and knowing the kids in these communities that you have, um, presented here, so critical need care, and, um, I'll urge a, a strong partnership with the district and, and with, uh, Children's Hospital moving forward.
Thank you for your comments, and I would say that Dr. Mary Ronan has been an extraordinary partner, both in the vision and thinking about this early and understanding how this intersection of health and education can only be good. So special thanks to Mary.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, we're to the section of our agenda where we have announcements, kudos, and retirements. Um, I understand, um, that we have two kudos. Ms. Bolton?
Thank you. I'm, I'm really excited about this. Uh, I know when Mr. Nelms and I first got elected, I know part of our focus was our high schools, uh, and, uh, with our past experience and under the leadership of the superintendent and the deputy superintendent and certainly Assistant Superintendent, uh, Dr. Lofton, uh, we have been doing a great deal of work in moving the accreditation of all of our high schools with Advanced Ed. For people that are old like me, it's the old North Central system. Uh, and indeed, it's not, uh, it's, it's very rare that many big urban districts are able to get accreditation. And my understanding is that this past week, uh, the Woodward Bulldogs, uh, if you will, Woodward, uh, Technical High School, uh, was, uh, awarded that accreditation, which is a great, great thing to happen. And previously, a number of our high schools have been awarded that. And I understand, uh, that a number of our high schools are in the queue to, uh, continue that so that, you know, we might be looking at a possibility, uh, at the end of this coming year or at least the beginning of the following year after that, that we could be one of the very few urban districts that have a great number of our high schools that would all be accredited, which I think is just very essential. And I would, I'll put it in the assignment piece, I hope that we can have a presentation as to how that-
as to how that's been going, how that's been working, how many have been accredited, how many are in the queue to be accredited. But a particular congratulations and kudos to Woodward and the work that those folks have been doing out there.
Kudos. Ms. Bates has a kudos to read.
Yes, this is a surprise. Kudos to Public Affairs Communications Coordinator, Chris Wolf. Years ago, Ms. Wolf stepped up to coordinate working with art teachers in the district to highlight the displays of student art that brightens the education center's main hallway. Those pictures remind us of just how talented and creative our students are. Nobody asked Ms. Wolf to do this, and it was not a part of her job description. Her initiative shows how student-centric she is and how much she cares about the CPS mission. Thank you, Ms. Wolf, for caring enough to donate your time to create a history for our students.
Thank you. Mrs. Bates, please present the retirements.
Yes, we have several staff members retiring as of June 1st. From our certificated personnel, Rosa B. Brinkman, Holly Burgess, Frances A. Hagan, Donna M. Peters-Brinkman, Michael D. Turner, Sammy L. Yates Jr., and then from our civil service personnel, Deborah A. Williams. We thank them for their service to our children and wish them well.
And President Danzby, can we do one more kudos?
Yes.
Because Walnut Hills High School was again named the number-one high school in the state of Ohio.
Awesome. Kudos, kudos to all. I appreciate that. Um, I have an announcement, and I'm going to apologize for having to read so much, but this is critical and important. And so this is an open letter to families and residents of Clifton, Clifton Heights, University Heights, Fairview, Cuff, and Spring Grove Village. Dear families and residents, we are writing to share facts and context behind recent discussions about educational needs of our district and what we believe is an exciting opportunity to restore a vibrant neighborhood school serving your communities. After a decline in enrollment, the district is witnessing growing demand in many areas, including yours. Contrary to state demographic predictions of an enrollment of 28,000, CPS now has a student population of 34,000 students. The good news is that more young families are moving into neighborhoods like yours and are entering their neighborhood public schools. Currently, CPS is surveying families in Clifton, Cuff, and Spring Grove Village about their interest in enrolling their children in a neighborhood school in the area. We also will be inviting families to attend in May an informational session about programming, including our successful blended model of a neighborhood school combined with a gifted academy of a new potential, of a potential new neighborhood school. One location option being pursued is creating space in the old Clifton School Building, owned by CPS and currently leased by the Clifton Cultural Arts Center, CCAC. Under the current lease with CPS, CCAC is entitled to reimbursement for building improvements estimated at about or between $1 to $2 million. In addition, the district has offered to give CCAC outright the carriage house it now leases from CPS, negotiate rental of other district space, and offer CCAC the opportunity to be a lead agency to provide arts programming as the school's community learning center partner, which would give CCAC an ongoing presence in providing arts programming to students, families, and residents. Ultimately, we respect the role of families to determine the best educational options for their children. At the same time, we have seen in other communities and the CPS Annual Stakeholder Priority Survey that strengthening neighborhood public schools is highly valued. This has led Cincinnati Public Schools committing to strengthening neighborhood schools through our recently released Vision 2020, My Tomorrow Plan. With support from families and residents of your neighborhoods, we would like to incorporate a neighborhood school serving your communities as a part of that plan. Thank you all for all that you do to contribute to a thriving Cincinnati. We are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public, and so let's, let's talk about how we do this. Each speaker has three minutes to speak. Mrs. Wagner, at the end of the table in the beautiful green dress, will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak. One other item to mention is when there is one topic that's scheduled for more than any 30 minutes at a time, we have to limit the amount of time. And so we have, we have 19 folks scheduled to speak about the same topic, and so we will limit that conversation or those topics to one and a half minutes. And so we're asking you to please be very cognizant of the buzzer that will ring, and I'll cue that up when we get to that portion. But for now, please come to the podium, Mr. Craig Rosen, followed by LaShonda Johnson, followed by Michelle Dillingham. You have three minutes, please.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Ronan, Treasurer Wagner, Administrator staff and guests. In addition to being the proud parent of two young CPS scholars, another role I undertake is president of CASE, as many might know, Cincinnatians Active to Support Education. In light of the board's ongoing discussions of the possibility placing a new money levy on the November 16 ballot, I'm pleased to announce the reactivation of CASE. To that end, it is my privilege to share, CASE, Cincinnatians Active to Support Education, has once again retained the services of Jens Soltmuller as CASE political strategist. Mr. Soltmuller is in the audience, if you'd please stand or... It's also exciting that CASE has altered Mr. Soltmuller's contract and payment structure so as to have full-time, year-long support of his engagement. This will provide ongoing continuity and support as we look towards the future. As an ongoing best practice, CASE will invite all CPS board members, Superintendent Ronan, Treasurer Wagner, in addition to other engaged, others engaged in supporting our district, to our board meetings and advisory committee planning sessions. CASE looks forward to a decision on the possibility of a new money levy, however the board deems appropriate. Thank you for all that you do to support Cincinnati schoolchildren and our extended communities.
Thank you. Ms. LaShonda Johnson, followed by Michelle Dillingham. Good evening.
I'm LaShonda Johnson, My Tomorrow Parent Ambassador, graduate for Parents for Public Schools, and a member of the LSDMC for Woodward High School. But here today, I'm just an engaged parent. I'm not here to discuss the academic or the technical courses that are being provided by Woodward, but to speak of the positive culture that they've mastered. And what I mean by that, I reviewed Harvard Business Review, and there were some few things on there that I agree with. The culture is an organization's immune system. It is a form of protection, it prevents wrong thinking and wrong people from entering in the first place. The organization's culture is a sum of the values and rituals which serve as a glue to interpret, to integrate the members of the organization, and Woodward has wonderfully synergy going on there. They have a culture that fits perfectly with the My Tomorrow concept, which is to make everyone feel inclusive despite their ideas, creating a culture that is conducive to learning. I contacted the regional coach for the Ohio Department of Education in his site review. The quality, the strengths here at the Quality Career Technical Studies Team found that the career choices class is a great addition to the curriculum to target the seventh and ninth graders. There's the right student, the right program for the right job. The workforce developer there has created a career cafe for the Woodward students where they can build relationships with potential employers and provide opportunities for our students to continue the professional career as they graduate. And this helped, this has helped her to, she's picked the right student, the right job, and thereby maintaining those professional relationships. Another strength is the literacy team, and this attests to the culture I spoke of. There's a positive rapport between the students and the teachers, the attempt to keep the students engaged. There's a new principal there, she's come ready to work, she's rigorously recruiting parents for the PALS program. She found 40 parents that attended the Leadership Academy, and this is where parents and guardians learn about ways to better support their students and move toward graduation. There's a community resource coordinator that has sought to build morale in the community as well as within the school. There was an open house that was most inviting, that had food and entertainment. They had a women's empowerment conference that explained what it is the worth to being a lady, the acronym for worth being wisdom, optimism, respect, talent, and humility. I also was fortunate enough to be a judge and invited for the staff recess. They had a staff recess where their staff participated in obstacle courses, musical chairs, and baskets.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Michelle Dillingham.
My name is Michelle Dillingham, resident of Kennedy Heights, Woodford LSDMC member, and tonight I'm addressing you as a member of the Cincinnati Educational Justice Coalition, or CEJC. We are partnering with the parents of public schools of greater Cincinnati to host an LSDMC conference this Saturday at the Mayerson right next door, beginning 9:00 a.m., free lunch until 3:00. This inaugural conference is offered to all who are interested in improving the LSDMC or local school decision-making committee process for their school. Parents and community members are especially encouraged to attend. The program includes various topics and guided interactive sessions where solutions to typical challenges facing LSDMCs will be shared. The success of the Community Learning Center model in CPS has helped transform our district, and the elements of this model include curricula that's engaging, culturally relevant, such as the arts and AP courses; two, emphasis on high-quality teaching, not on high-stakes testing; three, wraparound support such as health and social-emotional services; four, positive discipline practices; five, authentic parent and community engagement; and finally, six, inclusive school leadership. The LSDMC is the vehicle by which all this happens, and so we are excited about the conference this weekend. I heard of a recent field trip that some of you took to an Indiana charter school, and again, I urge you to not be distracted by what may seem to be better models. As you know, the district is still in need of resources and support to support the critical role of resource coordinators so that the transformative power of the Community Learning Center model can be fully realized. There are many people here committed to supporting the district in this matter, and we know that districts around the country are literally protesting, going on hunger strikes, and fighting for what we already have here. Members of the board, we urge you to do all you can to support authentic engagement right here at home, renew your commitment to this district policy, and lend your leadership to supporting LSDMCs. In closing, an example of the power of LSDMCs, I'm a proud member of Woodford's LSDMC, and we are right now working with the district with an added emphasis of arts and culture for the children there. And so we are hosting another Walk-In for Public Education at Woodford on May 4. We are walking in in conjunction with over 80 districts across the nation supporting public schools. Parents, community, teachers will walk into Woodford once again to uplift the work being done there and draw attention to the positive role of public education. Thank you. I'll leave flyers about these two events with your secretary.
Thank you. Our next set of speakers are, have signed up to talk on the same topic, and so again, anytime there is a single topic for discussion that would go 30 minutes or more, we have to limit the time. There are 19 speakers, I will call them in order. I ask that you please come to the lower podium, perhaps to line up as we call several names at one time. We will ask you to limit your comments to one and a half minutes. Our first speaker is Christine Vanderbent, followed by Brian Gary, followed by Brian Kerwin.
I'm Christine Vanderbent, and I'm here this evening representing Fairview Clifton German Language Schools LSDMC. Tonight and in the coming days, you as community leaders have decisions to make regarding the programming next door at CCAC. The CCAC is the destination for Fairview and non-Fairview students after school, on the weekends, and during the summer months. Though there is one critical piece to all of this that we should not forget, and that is the Fairview School. And our LSDMC has developed a plan that would support the expansion of Fairview with before, during, and after-school resources. This plan supports the district with a more fiscally responsible option and a plan that would enhance the learning opportunities for the students at Fairview and surrounding CPS schools. This plan, designed by the LSDMC, would align with the cultural arts focus of the CCAC and give us the space needed. Also, our plan aligns with a new mission and vision that we have outlined this year. As an LSDMC, we want to be strategic and forward-thinking to ensure that Fairview continues to be a successful educational experience now and in the future, and this collaboration with the CCAC will support our endeavors.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Brian Gary, followed by Brian Kerwin, followed by Uri Sella.
Greetings, honorable board members and superintendent. I'm Brian Gary, I'm a graduate of CPS from the School for Creative and Performing Arts, former band director at North Avondale and Sands Montessori, former art teacher, and I have a degree in music composition. The Clifton Cultural Arts Center means community. It means a sense of place, it is an anchor for so many people and groups, it means thousands of children get art programming that they need and they may not otherwise receive. The CCAC means hot chocolate and cookies for my kids and a warm feeling for my whole family and friends. Place matters, and the CCAC has created a place-based Clifton identity for our metropolitan landscape and offers arts and culture experiences which are the heartbeat of our city. The center is a place that provides a unique sense of place to such organizations as the Transgender Day of Remembrance and the Safe and Supported Group, the Lighthouse Organization which helps homeless youth, and of course, provides place for scores of local artists and organizations. I implore you not to stop the momentum of this great institution and to allow the CCAC to stay in the building that has become home to the most active arts, music, and dance center in the city. I have faith that together, we can find a solution that works for our kids and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brian Kerwin, followed by Uri Sella, followed by Dick Aff, followed by Alicia Rosalit.
Hi, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'll try to be brief. I'm a parent of a daughter who goes to Fairview-Clifton, and I'm also a resident of Clifton. And as a family, we use the programming at CCAC all the time. My daughter takes lessons there. We always take in the family programming that they have. It's a great institution. I think it's great that CPS, where you've exceeded the predictions, the state demographic predictions, predictions, you know, 28,000 up to 34,000. The reason why people are moving back into the city district is for institutions like the CCAC, for all the stuff that's been happening over the Rhine and downtown, and it's things like this that's driving the exodus, or the reverse exodus, I guess, back into the city. If we start messing with some of these institutions, we're going to start driving the people away again. And in addition to just these institutions, it's also the great work that's happening at the schools that are working, such as Walnut Hills, such as Fairview, and we need to improve. And we need to improve and keep that going, but not at all the cost, not at a cost that might affect a great institution that's not only valuable to the neighborhood of Clifton, but also to the city as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to give my time to Leslie Mooney, the one and a half minutes that I have.
Okay.
Thanks.
The next speaker, our next speaker will be Mr. Dick Aft, followed by Alicia Roslett, followed by Cedric Michael Cox, followed by Gillian Sella.
Thank you. Thank you for your service and your time. My name is Dick Aft. I've lived in Clifton for twenty-nine years. Because of my experience in needs assessment and fundraising, before there was a CCAC, a number of neighbors approached me to ask me, did I think that the neighborhood would support both programmatically and financially a CCAC? I said, no way. I was dead wrong. What I have found is, as I'm wearing a red shirt tonight, CCAC has caught fire. It's a thriving institution that's serving our children and families. Madam Chair, I'm very glad to see that you too are wearing red this evening. I thank you. I thank the LSDMC, Clifton Town Meeting, and all of those folks who are here tonight and active with CCAC. Together, we will find a win-win solution for this issue. Appreciative of your letter and all of the work that's gone into it, and I know that the future is very bright for all of us, and we'll all be wearing red at the next meeting. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alicia Roslett, followed by Cedric Michael Cox, followed by Gillian Sella, and followed by Leslie Mooney.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Alicia Roslett. I'm a Cincinnati resident, artist, and an early childhood educator. I'm asking the Board of Education to honor the lease agreement it entered with the Clifton Cultural Arts Center. Children that attend the CPS schools directly benefit from the partnership with the center, and it would behoove the district to maintain this reciprocal relationship. According to the National Endowment for the Arts Office of Research and Analysis Research Report Number 55 from 2012, and I quote, "Arts in the schools increased test scores and lowered dropout rates." The report, Critical Links, contains sixty-two academic research studies that, taken together, demonstrate that arts education helps close the achievement gap, improves academic skills essential for reading and language development, and advances students' motivation to learn. Longitudinal data from twenty-five thousand students demonstrated that involvement in the arts is linked to higher academic performance, increased standardized testing scores, more community service, and lower dropout rates, all things that we're trying, oh, sorry, off quote, "all things we're trying to work towards." Back to the quote, "These cognitive and developmental benefits are reaped by students regardless of their socioeconomic status." And this is quoted from the American for the Arts websites. Bronson and Merriman from 2010 were quoted in a Newsweek cover story in 2010 that looked at creativity and childhood and compared the findings with the lifetime accomplishments study participants as adults. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cedric Michael Cox, followed by Gillian Sella, followed by Leslie Mooney, and Dick Waller.
I'm just going to speak from the heart. As an art educator and as a visual artist, first of all, I'm very honored to be one of the artists in this city, working with Cincinnati Public Schools as the Artist of Residence for, with working with Dr. Rudnick. And the thing that I hear about the most is there's not enough time in a day. You know, I've been a teacher over St. Francis Serif School, Taft High School through the Art Academy, and Mount Washington, their after-school program, and there's just not enough time in a day to tell a kid, put your crayons down, put this down. You cannot, we gotta go. Another class is coming in. My normal classes are forty minutes long. And some of my students go to the Clifton Cultural Arts Center and other places, and it's because of institutions like this, the extended school day is important, but you need more time to nurture these, these skills, these, develop these, these ideas, this vision of life and how to interpret life through art. And keeping this organization, the CCAC, intact the way it is can only further strengthen the community and the community as a whole. I'm also partnering with Fairview in the next couple of weeks on a mural that's going to take place at the Clifton Cultural Arts Center, and we'll be bringing the students from Fairview, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, to the Clifton Cultural Arts Center to work on this wonderful work of art. And it's inspiring to me as an artist who exhibited there and as a, as a, as a resident of the city, just to be involved with such an institution that really fosters the arts and their community and the surrounding school. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Gillian Sella. I'm a mother of small children in CPS, and I'm also a performer in the Cincinnati Symphony, so I'm involved in the arts. And I know you know how important the arts are to children, and I was struck last week how they had this thing about an opera coming once, a one-time opera, and all the enthusiasm there was for that. That's terrific. I think that sounded like a great project, but the CCAC is offering arts every day for kids in the whole community of the whole town of Cincinnati. And I hope you've been to some Wednesdays on the Green to see how diverse the audience is there. So it's a really strong organization that's been doing well. I also want to say I have some major concerns as a Clifton resident. Already, the traffic and the parking is very dangerous, the way it is now for Fairview drop-off. I'm afraid a kid is going to get hit there. It's really a problem. So if we're adding more schools to CPS, to that location in that neighborhood, more children, or more schools, that's a major concern for the community. Cars can get stuck. What if there's an emergency vehicle? But most importantly, I think a kid is going to get hit, and that's going to be a tragedy. Also, it's unfortunate that Fairview wasn't built bigger. I know that the principal did ask for that at the time it was built. It was pretty obvious that if you moved that school to such a thriving community, there would be more demand. It's, it's not really a surprise for people who've been following Fairview, but now it's, seems like catch-up. Thank you.
Our next speaker, our next speaker will be Ms. Leslie Mooney, followed by Dick Waller, followed by Katie Johnson, and Dave Allen.
I'm sorry?
Sorry. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Uri yielded his time to me.
Oh, so we had a sheet with your name on it. I hadn't gotten to it yet. Okay, sure.
Oh, is it back on now? Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone. We are hopeful that at CCAC, that when we have an open dialogue with the CPS board in early May, that we can establish an understanding and a relationship where your plans for the former Clifton School Building are communicated directly to CCAC and the community, including plans that directly affect CCAC's future. I would like to address, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I'd like to address some points in the open letter to families in Clifton, Cuff, and Spring Grove that was passed out just about an hour or so ago before the start of this meeting. Frankly, I have a concern that the Board of Education continues to speak to CCAC through the media or other indirect means. It would really be helpful to communicate, to our communication, to speak to us directly. For instance, no one has ever directly talked to us about, nor have any official offer or any details been offered for, one, the rental of district space, or quote, "shared space" with CPS. We first learned of this by seeing a draft of the survey sent to a limited number of families in the three neighborhoods that I mentioned before. Then we heard that CTM, after their meeting with Superintendent Ronan, shared that with us, and then we heard it again through the Greater Cincinnati Schools Facebook page. Similarly, with, with the offer of becoming a lead agency. We're not exactly sure what that means, or what you guys intend for that to mean. The only communication about the Carriage House is what was shared in a few sentences at the board meeting on April 11th. Again, there has not been an official offer with any details provided. And to put giving CCAC outright the Carriage House into perspective, we're talking about a building that needs at least three-quarters of a million dollars in renovation, and roughly offers ten percent of the programming space that, that our current site offers to CCAC. So in closing, I'd like to ask that you provide us a detailed written plan and schedule a meeting to talk about the transfer of the Carriage House ownership, being a lead agency, and sharing or renting space. Until you do that, we are asking that you no longer communicate these options because they have not been discussed or vetted, and I think it just represents a fundamental lack of understanding of what goes on at CCAC and what the community has invested in this. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker will be Dick Waller, followed by Katie Johnson, Dave Allen, and Barbara Gleck.
My name is Dick Waller. I'm going to have a lot of trouble following that act. A thriving arts community that we have, that you have, if you have a thriving arts community, it's a sign of a great community. I feel sorry for all of you because you have a real problem. How do we deal with this? And I'm just going to say that try to find a way that, that the CCAC can continue on with the remarkable job that they're doing in our community. That's all I want to say.
Ms. Katie Johnson.
Good evening. Thank you so much. I just wanted to speak to you as an educator, as a theater practitioner and scholar, as a parent of a child at Fairview, as a resident of Clifton, and as a donor and a member of the CCAC. And you see, all of us here share those identities. They are not mutually exclusive. We want a solution that enables both of these thriving institutions to continue, not to pit them against one another, not to shoehorn one into a contaminated building, and to overstuff, on the other hand, one of the most thriving schools in the city. Do you realize that already those kids start eating at 11:30 in the morning? They start at 9:15. They finish eating at 1:00. When you add another 100 or 200 students, where are you going to feed them? Where are you going to let them have gym if there's just one gymnasium? How are you going to accommodate that, not merely by classroom space over at the CAC? In closing, please work with the plan for LSDMC. Please let us have our arts center and to keep the school thriving and to come together. Please do not shut down the CAC, CCAC. Please do not thin and weaken the integrity of Fairview-Clifton Language School. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. David Allen, followed by Barbara Gleck, followed by Chelsea Borgman.
Thank you, Board. I grew up in a small farm town where being an artist was not important, was not valued. Unfortunately, what was valued was being a scholar and an athlete, which I was neither of. So what I was, was a lost child all the way through school until my senior year, where I went to a program, a new program, where I would go to school half-day and work half-day. My work job was as a graphic designer. There was a man in town who built architectural models and renderings. I discovered there that I did have talent, talent that was valued, much to my parents' grin. I applied to go to the Columbus College of Art and Design. I was accepted, and I graduated with a BFA. I have had a long and successful career as a graphic designer, art director, vice president of advertising agencies. I have designed a, I have a business now called Green Bird, where I have designed green products without birds. I am also working on a new project with a former partner of mine, business partner, where we will be helping companies prepare for global warming. All of this happened by accident for me. What CCAC does is allows children to see every day what art can do for them, can see adults performing over at the school as artists, and it encourages them and lets them know that this can be a career. Thank you.
Madam President, Board Members, Superintendent Ronan, and invited guests. My name is Barbara Gleck. I moved to Cincinnati forty-six years ago, and I love living in Clifton. I know that Clifton is politically active, and I want to remind you that every time there is a school levy on the ballot, Clifton is one of the leading supporters for education in Cincinnati. We never forget that that's a very vital issue, and it's important to us as individuals and as members of this community. I want to remind you that in the time that I've, well, in the forty-five years you have listed on your, on your website, there were a few renewals passed, eleven renewals passed, and eight new issues passed. But unfortunately, twelve new issues were defeated, and one, only one renewal has failed. We want to lead you and the rest of the city into supporting the financial needs of this district, and it's not going to happen if our disappointments are so great that we cannot continue our great support. I'm a former officer, treasurer, and president of Cincinnati's Act of to Support Education. I have a long history of working for levies. Don't disappoint us. Try to make some sort of creative and mutually agreeable settlement.
Ms. Chelsea Borgman, followed by Carolyn Miller, followed by Kip Egan.
Hello. Hi. My name is Chelsea Borgman, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I'm a graduate of CPS and a proud alumna of your schools. I am grateful to the educators I had at CPS who gave me the confidence to speak to you today, taught me how to rally passionately around a cause, and instilled in me the belief that one must fight for the preservation of institutions they believe in. I thank you for your dedication to providing our city's children with the same opportunities. I am here today as an arts educator, an artist, a Clifton resident, and the head of local arts organization and gallery space. Myself and many other volunteers have created a petition in support of the CCAC, which has accumulated over eight-hundred-and-fifty signatures and as well as hundreds of comments in less than a week's time. I would like to share with you our message. We are a group of artists, institutions, and friends of the Clifton Cultural Arts Center who believe that the CCAC is a vital part of Cincinnati's arts community and is a valuable partner in offering community-quality education to children and families across Cincinnati. CCAC plays a vital role in supplementing the children's arts experiences. Field trips to CCAC have allowed for broadened opportunities for learning, putting students in direct contact with community-oriented art projects and pieces. Clifton Cultural Arts Center has engaged the families of surrounding communities and has worked extensively with Rockdale School, Fairview School, Clifton, and Madisonville communities, raising money specifically to provide art experiences and transportation free of charge when it was not available elsewhere. Clifton Cultural Arts Center provides an invaluable service to the fine arts before in-performing arts of our community. This institution gives a platform for both established artists and emerging talent. They provide a volume of space unlike any other institution, allowing for the fostering of large-scale and contemporary work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Ms. Miller.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Miller. My husband and I are both here tonight, again, along with many others, to show our support for the Clifton Cultural Arts Center, and we agree with everything that's been said so far. I just wanted to make one additional point about a little history of the Fairview-Clifton School. We're longtime Clifton residents, and we remember the strong support that Clifton families gave to the Fairview German Language Program when it started as a magnet school many, many, many years ago, up in the Cuff neighborhood at the Fairview site. Clifton families were crucial, along with many other families, in developing the school into the strong, vibrant, and excellent school it is today. When the decision was made to move this German Language Program into a new school building in Clifton, Clifton residents- in Clifton, Clifton residents were very excited to host this terrific program because they assumed that access for Clifton neighborhood families would be maintained and even increased. Now, with the new lottery system, access for neighborhood families has sadly diminished. We would like to make a simple suggestion. We encourage CPS to use a weight or set aside in the lottery for neighborhood children who live in proximity to any magnet school in the district, including Fairview-Clifton. This would tie into CPS's board's great community's goal, as well as furthering the health of these children by encouraging walking to school instead of needing bus transportation. We all know that excellent schools thrive when they are in the midst of supportive families and communities. Please keep the CCAC there. Thank you.
Mr. Kip Egan, followed by Lisa McKenzie, followed by William Messer, and Carol Freel.
Again, thank you for letting us speak tonight, and thank you for coming to the CTM meeting, Madam Chairman, and pledging to work with the community. I'm not going to talk about the CCAC. I'm going to talk about what happens outside of the CCAC. Right now, we have a very, very challenging traffic situation. There are times, if you live on McAlpin, you can drive up McAlpin, and there are cars parked on both sides of the road, and there is a line of people queued up in the drive, in the actual roadway, all the way down McMillan, all the way up McAlpin. So this is dangerous. We've seen people look and go in the wrong direction. We've seen people get nervous and do U-turns. I believe that the school board not only has responsibility to the students that go to the schools, but they have responsibility to the, to the communities that those schools exist in. I think it would be a bad decision to add another 400, 300, 200, 100 students to that location. Every day, it's, it's, it is a traffic nightmare. We are concerned about emergency vehicles. If there's another national tragedy as, as they have in other parts of the country, how, we want first responders to get there, the police to get there. And they say that it's not a matter of minutes, it's a matter of seconds to get there. What if there's a fire at the rec center? What if there's a child that needs to have an ambulance? We are frightened. We are frightened that this increase in numbers, increase of buses, increase of families getting, dropping their kids off, is going to be a parking nightmare. Not only a parking nightmare, but it's a future parking disaster.
Lisa McKenzie, William Messer, and Carol Freel.
Hi, I'm Lisa McKenzie. I'm a teacher at the Art Academy as well as at Clifton Cultural Arts Center, and my son went through Cincinnati Public Schools. I have to say, I was shocked when I saw that picture because CCAC doesn't work like that. We don't tell people what to do. We're a grassroots organization, and the reason why we're so strong is because we collaborate. That is, that is the way we roll. And I really wish that, I just hope that you will collaborate with us. We're full of really smart, creative people who can come up with good solutions to problems. I want you to deal with what is. What is is what's already there. I also want the parents here in Clifton to be aware of what is, and that we also have a really great school, surprisingly enough, Rockdale. Rockdale has the number-one principal in Ohio. Rockdale is, has empty seats. People don't know about Rockdale, and I think they really should, because I think that there is a neighborhood element already available to us, and I think that it would be really strengthening Rockdale would be good. We already do. We are already a partner with Rockdale CCAC, just the same as Children's Hospital and the Avondale Development Board and Cincinnati Zoo. And if you cut down Cincinnati, like CCAC, to one-tenth, we can only do one-tenth as much support, not only to Fairview, but also to Rockdale. And also, may I say to the adults, because when you have adults who are creative, they make better families, happier students. That's what I want to say.
Mr. William Messer, followed by Carol Freel.
Thank you very much. I'm here in support of the Clifton Cultural Arts Center. I attend art classes and talks at CCAC. I've taken classes there. I've brought kids to puppet shows there. I've danced to music on the lawn, and much more. And particularly to see how many of you got the memo saying you want to keep the Clifton Cultural Arts Center here to please wear red, by my count, including pink and dusty rose. That's the majority of you. So thank you for supporting us. As you can see by the sea of red in the audience, the CCAC is an institution about which there is much passion from its community. I want to remind you, this is the same community which, when threatened to lose its cinema 25, 30 years ago, rallied, demonstrated, created mile-long protests. We even met with Wendy's Board in Dublin, Ohio, to prevent it from becoming a fast-food outlet, and there's a cinema there. More recently, when threatened with the loss of Keller's Market, the community again coalesced to fight against becoming a food desert. It took us years, but Clifton Market begins construction in days. So you can see similar passion and even coming together over the threatened loss of an art center, our art center. The obvious lesson is that in this issue, it will be better to work with us than against us. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Ms. Carol Freel.
Good evening. My name is Carol Freel. I have lived in Clifton for 45 years. My three children collectively attended Cincinnati Public Schools for 39 years. I and most of the Clifton community have always been very supportive of schools, of school levies, tax levies, et cetera. The Clifton Cultural Arts Center is a wonderful organization. It was built by the tireless efforts of many people in the community, donations from many of us and from foundations and the city and the state. You will be obligated to repay them, I think, more than $2 million. If you valued the hours that all those people worked with their hearts and souls to create this building, you'd need a couple of million more. It seems to me somewhat unfair to take a building that was abandoned many years ago and that has been restored to a great, great building by the efforts of people supporting the Clifton Cultural Arts Center, and now to take it back, that it's now a great place. Maybe you own some other buildings, I don't know, but instead of paying that money back to CCAC, use it for something constructive. Take another building and renovate it and use that for your overflow. And I understand there is going to be a large levy this November, and if it passes, we could start using some of that money for a neighborhood school in Clifton, for adding on to the current school, for many things. But it's a waste of money for you to give it back and to take that building that people have worked so hard to create. It's simply a wonderful organization.
Thank you all for your attendance here tonight. I'm being urged to remind the public to read the open letter to the Clifton families, and, and we will continue to talk about the opportunities that we've discussed. We'll clarify in our next meeting, and we did make direct offers when we did meet in April. So thank you again for your attendance. Mr. Nelms, would you please present the resolution for board consideration?
I have a resolution for board consideration. Most of you have it in your possession, so I'll just read the header. A resolution to establish the naming of the U. Stem High School indoor athletic facility. Two, the MAC, we did a presentation at Cal, so the details were pretty much extensive, and I do present as written.
Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Ms. Bolton.
Hi.
Mrs. Hoffman.
Hi.
Ms. Jones.
Hi.
Mr. Minera.
Hi.
Mr. Nelms.
Hi.
President Copeland-Dansby.
Hi.
Superintendent Ronan, do you have a report?
No, I announced it during kudos.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendations of the superintendent?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Thank you. On page two, under E, Director of Curriculum, voting on that this evening, and previously that person was in the Teacher Recruitment and Selection Office Coordinator.
Yes.
Am I to assume that when that person moves from that position, that position also will be filled?
Not necessarily. I believe our Assistant Director of HR maybe, who's Yanetta Harper, may well be assuming those roles, or that, the role in teacher recruitment, especially as we look at the budget. So we'll have to see.
So it is up for discussion, at least.
It's up for discussion, depending on what the budget looks like, but we do think that there, we do have capacity in-house with our new Assistant Director.
Any other comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve the recommendations of the superintendent?
So moved.
Is there a second? We did, we did that already? Okay, great. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates.
Hi.
Ms. Bolton.
Hi.
Mrs. Hoffman.
Hi.
Ms. Jones.
Hi.
Mr. Minera.
Hi.
Mr. Nelms.
Hi.
President Copeland-Dansby.
Hi.
Do I have a motion to approve the report of the Treasurer?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Bolton.
Thank you. Again, on page three, what we talked about last time, the then-and-now issue. I don't think I need to repeat it, but that's, I'm sure there's a reason for it.
Yeah, this occurred, actually, the issue occurred, actually, at the beginning of the school year, where there was a transition in some employees in the department. And so the contract before, actually, before the contract went through approval from the board, so this is just catching up some of the old invoices, and we formed a team to work on. This particular company is difficult because they invoice for every school every day, and it, so it's this massive quantity of stuff, so we're really trying to work on the process together.
Okay. If I could also ask, on page six, the ThinkPads, I understand it, but I think the public might want to know why CPS feels compelled to do this regarding, I think it's while things are being, taking care of, the role that we play with the auxiliary piece, especially as it pertains to technology. I think people know about special services, but they may not know what we do in the auxiliary schools regarding technology.
Right, so auxiliary funds are actually pass-through funds to the non-public schools, and they have the decision-making on how to spend those funds to support their children.
Thank you. And my last one is, I think the board and the public should probably have some additional conversation, not a conversation, but information on page seven, number 18, the Queen City Transportation. I know the President was looking at that as well, so if we have somebody that can describe that. I know you've kept us informed throughout this process, but I think...
Looks like Mr. Davis will come and give us a couple comments. That would be great. To help us understand that, because I was going there next.
I figured. Former member of Fine Arts.
That's right.
Sitting a little too high.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. In regards to the Queen City contract that you see in front of you, that is a piece of the transportation contract that will go forth for the next few years for transporting the kids. It represents a portion of the total transportation of the kids. In fact, there are 322 buses, and that represents 100 buses of the 322.
How does this interact with First Student, or is this a replacement of First Student?
Well, what this actually does is, First Student initially, previously or currently right now, has 322 buses. This contract represents a piece of that, so their portion has decreased significantly. This represents about a third of their carrying.
Okay, so help me understand, Queen City is, is a subcontractor of First Student?
No, they are an independent contractor.
This is in addition to First Student?
What, what's happened is, First Student's contract is expiring this year, okay? They have 322 buses currently that they are servicing our yellow bus contract. And we released an RFP back in January. Of that, we got many vendors who sent proposals, of which Queen City was interested in proposing for 100 of the 322.
Okay.
Vehicles.
Got it. So Queen City will operate 100.
Right.
Of the 322 that we need.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Question about Queen City, and I don't see it listed here, but you know how we have the communication services, where they alert parents, and there's that call-back-and-forth process? Does Queen City allow that?
Queen City will have a call center. They already have a call center. They will, they will increase their call center proportionally in the contract based upon the number of vehicles a vendor has. They have to have a particular size call center. So far, Queen City has done an exceptional job in transporting our kids.
Okay.
In fact, I've had three schools today ask me if they could be a Queen City school, so that tells you.
They want to be a Queen City school. Well, I think the reason that Board Member Bolton and I both bring this up is this is an absorbent amount of money, and we've had several issues over this school year and the previous year, and, you know, delays and all kinds of things related to our vend, our previous slash current vendor, First Student. So we just want to make sure that we're moving forward in a, in a great direction. So it looks like if we need 322 buses and we've covered 100 with Queen City, then we still need First Student and/or another vendor.
Well, we're right in the process of finishing up, finalizing the negotiations with the others.
Okay.
At that point, I'll be bringing those back.
Excellent.
But what I want to say is that because of the RFP, we've been now able to have more vendors, which allows us greater leverage in the operation of the transportation service. When vendors fail to meet our requirements, we can opt to take away the service that they have and then get, transfer it over to another vendor who is more quickly and, and performs at the level that we expect for our kids. It's intolerable to have late buses of any sort, so, because that affects the curriculum.
I appreciate that, I do. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions related to the report of the Treasurer? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates.
Hi.
Ms. Bolton.
Hi.
Mrs. Hoffman.
Hi.
Ms. Jones.
Hi.
Mr. Minera.
Hi.
Mr. Nelms.
Hi.
President Copeland-Dansby.
Hi. Moving on to inquiries and updates, it looks like Mr. Nelms has an inquiry slash update.
They call me Mr. Nelms in certain circles. I just wanted to say that there was a lot of intense labor and work that went into the equity policy, so I guess as a board, I just don't want us to lose sight of that commitment and that we continue to stay committed so that we can see the culture shift that's needed to make this reality and to make it work. And just wanted to be sure that maybe at each preceding meeting, we at least make a note of what we need to do moving forward to make sure that this policy has some, some bite beyond its bark. That's it.
Thank you. Are there any other inquiries or updates? I do want to, I guess this is an update, I want to urge you all to please stay close to your email in the next 24 hours, because there will be a couple important dates coming to you for some meetings that we need to schedule that are rather pertinent. And so I've delivered those to Ms. Davis after we talked earlier today, and so please make sure you check your email, because that'll be a fast-moving target. I guess that's an update. All right. Are there any assignments? I'm going to go to my good friend, Ms. Hoffman.
Yep, so I have an assignment, so I know the board made an assignment for administration to develop some new enrollment procedures, looking at both timelines and procedures for our magnet and neighborhood schools to, to be more aligned. looking at both timelines and procedures for our magnet and neighborhood schools to be more aligned there. I would like to add to that, if it's okay with the Board, that we're also looking at our high school enrollment procedures. I've had a number of community members reach out to me recently, which prompted me to look on our website about how you enroll in high school. And I will admit, I read it and walked away completely confused. That you can enroll online if you are a current CPS student entering 7th grade, but then it was like a choose-your-own-adventure after that, where if you're, if you're a CPS resident, but you're not a current student, and you're enrolling in the lower grades, you have to go to the Ed Center and fill it out by paper. But if it's the upper high school grades, you go to the school site. And then if you're a CPS high schooler transferring to another high school, there's, you go to another. We need to centralize this process. I think to Mr. Nelms' point he just brought up about equity, the, when it, when we are doing things where school sites are enrolling children, we're opening up the opportunity for them to be selective in who they're taking, and/or not getting back to them in the timelines that we, we know is right for kids. And so, I think just in terms of that assignment, that the high school enrollment is looked at too, in terms of the equity and the ease for our families. So if we could add that to that assignment.
We have that? Okay. Are there any other assignments? Ms. Bolton?
I have-
I'm sorry, Ms. Wagner.
I have, I have two. One is to follow up on the advanced ed process, so that we can understand what it's really like, and what is being evaluated. Which schools have been accredited? Which ones are in the queue? I don't think it has to be a long or extensive effort, but I do think it's something of which to be proud. And I think that we do want to know what we're learning from that accreditation too, regarding our high schools. So I would appreciate some sort of an assignment that, that says that there will be a presentation brought back to us at some, maybe a committee of the whole, or what have you. And the second one I have is that Student Achievement Today heard a presentation from Carpe Diem, and the request to extend their contract and their stay by two years more than they currently are allotted, so to speak. There was a very good presentation, but I would like the Administration to evaluate the information that Carpe Diem gave us, and also address the issue as to whether or not they should be extended, and give us some advice on that. And more particularly too, if they are to be extended, if it's either in that space, and they did, surprisingly to me anyway, did sound receptive to being possibly someplace else within the district as well. They did not discount that. And then also, there were some very interesting things that the Student Achievement will probably follow up on, on the idea that what Carpe Diem is doing now, in part, is kids can stay longer, and indeed, possibly get an associate's degree as well as the diploma. And I know with the new ESSA, I think it allows students to progress at a different speed and time. So, most importantly, administrative review of the data and advice as to what you think we should do. Should Carpe Diem remain a part of our portfolio, and, and should we extend their stay and place, or other place?
Mr. Minera?
Okay, I might sound like a broken record, especially to the committee members that were with me today, but I don't think we're channeling, and did Michelle Dillingham leave? I don't think we're, I know Craig is here, but we're not communicating what a community learning center is when people are asking what's a lead agency. Policy number 9142 clearly states, LSDMCs support the school transformation to a community learning center. The LSDMC recommends lead agency, resource coordination, after-school health, mental health, and other support services. I think a very effective LSDMC, and an LSDMC that's very engaged, can communicate this not only to their surrounding community, to their parents, to all the stakeholders that they work with. And we should not be contemplating questions as what is a lead agency? And a very involved community that works with the LSDMC should be jumping at the idea of becoming a lead agency. There are so many pluses to why we spent numerous months creating policy 9142. And then, a community learning center has its own policy, is 7500, that clearly states that each community learning center should have a resource coordinator. And so, my assignment is, can we figure out a way on where are we failing with this communication? These are two documents that the community has spent a lot of information on. These are not conversations the Board should be having to educate people on, even though it is our responsibility within the community. But this is something that LSDMCs should know by heart. It's part of the description of what it is on our Board policy. And, 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 and both of them, of LSDMC and Community Learning Center. This is an incredible opportunity that we've been highlighted, time and time and time, reminded by our CFT President, that people across the country are looking at us for this model. And so, for especially our schools who are doing amazing, with an amazing community that's surrounding them, not to know how to leverage this to make it work, we are totally speaking two different languages. And I thought I was the one to speak Spanish here, but we are not speaking the same communication, the same language here. This is vibrant, this is transformative, this is innovating. I don't see, I mean, this is, has transformed communities. This is a great way to become a partner in doing the things that energize our schools, whether it's art, or health, or special services, or social services. So can we assign somebody to figure out where are we failing in communicating these two policies?
Do we understand that?
I will certainly work with the Fairview LSDMC to make sure that they understand what a lead agency is.
I think it's broader than that, too, though, what you're saying.
I think it's broader than, I think it's-
Yes, but-
All of our schools that don't have a community learning center. I think it's all of our schools who, you know, here, here's the thing.
I get it now.
Everybody, everybody always says, and, and this is the question I ask to childrens, everybody says Euler.
Yeah.
Yes, Euler is one way to community, to do community learning center.
It's not the only.
But community learning center could be art. Definitely be art in everything that could get done there. It could be gifted services, it could be social services, it could be food pantries. There are so many things that are not explored in these two policies. And so, my assignment is not just one school. My assignment is, we're about, we heard from the Coalition that they are going to meet with the LSDMCs. What a great way to reinforce this policy, and ask questions, and communicate answers. So maybe that is one assignment, that we go to this, as a district, participate in this LSDMC conference, and make sure that we're commuting, communicating that the policy is clear. And if there's any questions, be happy to, to answer them.
So I think, I think I heard a couple of things, just one moment, Ms. Jones. So, I think traditionally, at least for me, when I hear of a community learning center, having supported them through working with lead agencies in my career, you know? I think of social services, and pantries, and food programs, and that kind of thing. But I think, given some recent conversation, and using the word "community learning center", that we are needing to communicate a broader definition of what that could mean for a school, and exactly what a lead agency means. It was like a light went off.
Yeah, I know, and that's fine.
Because we had talked, we had talked about that. So I think, I'm trying to help our Superintendent, her staff. I think what we're asking for is just some clarification on some opportunities related to what a community learning center could be. And as we talk about, you know, working through the issues with Clifton and CCAC and that, really spelling out what we're meaning by the opportunity to be a community, a lead agency for a community learning center. Because I agree with you, there's obviously some miscommunication, some miscommunication there. Or maybe we're not being clear enough. So I think it would be important, you know, especially given what I heard tonight, in that we've not given any clear, concise offers and that, because that's absolutely not true. Ms. Jones?
I'd just like Board Member Minera to repeat the policy numbers, just as a reference point for us, please.
And I'm so glad that Craig is here, because he knows the hard work that both of these policies, and so he's a community-involved individual. Board Policy 9142 is our community, our LSDMC, I'm sorry, is our LSDMC. And 7500 is our community learning centers. They're to the public to read, and we want every single one of our schools to be a community learning center.
Excellent point. Are there any other assignments? Ms. Hoffman?
I have one coming out of Student Achievement Committee, that I think is hopefully much more straightforward. So our CFT President had asked us to look into some research around the benefits of extending the amount of time for recess and physical activity. And we were discussing whether this should land with Student Achievement Committee or policy. And if it pleases the Board, we'd like to assign it to Student Achievement first, so that they can look and, look at the data, and look at the research. And then, based on that, if they do think it benefits our, our kids, they can assign it to policy, to write a policy around. So if we could assign it to Student Achievement.
Sounds good to me, you guys. Okay with that? Good. Two, just in closing, are there any other assignments? Just in closing, I'm going to assign to myself, to ensure that you also get some dates related to a separate Board Retreat, where we can go back and do some of the self-assessment that Mr. Nelms continues to remind us of, and some deliberate goal-setting. Because what I don't want to happen is these assignments come to the Administration, and they're not on point for any goal that we have established and/or created.
To, to that point, thank you. I think that's needed. And I understand things have changed somewhat for the Saturday Retreat.
Yes.
It would be great for us, prior to Saturday morning, to have what the agenda will look like.
Oh, you will, absolutely.
Okay.
For certain.
Thank you.
Absolutely, and so having no other business come before the Board, we are adjourned. Transferring? We are transferring to your personal address.
Sometimes, sometimes you have to let things go.
Hey, Chris, you want me to just take a picture of this, so I can leave without the tape?
If you want to.
If I can get the website by taking the pictures.
Yeah.